Please join me in the Houth religions.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you. I know you're here for a couple of different merit badges as well, so stick around, enjoy the meeting. I have a couple of announcements I'd like to make. One, there will be a meeting next Monday on an off night to discuss the bridge project with Terry Ward from Mendat. Prior to that meeting, there will be a very short election certification by the council. Our city council chambers were not available that night, and the meeting's gonna, so the meeting will be held at the Winona County History Center where there was a room of adequate size available. Also, want to mention, just say a big thank you to everybody that was involved in welcoming our sister-city ambassadors from Misato, Japan. They had a good time here from all counts, and it was great to have them back once again. I know our students and adult chaperones are looking forward to their visit there in April. Also, a reminder that on November 15th, alternate side parking starts, so be aware of that, avoid any tickets for that. And I just want to kind of salute and thank our veterans. Veterans Day next Tuesday on the 11th. City Hall will be closed, but I'd like to say a big thank you to everybody that has served or is currently serving. And to the, I believe, we have two veterans on the city council here, both Paul and Jerry. I don't know if I'm missing anybody, but thank you for your service. And maybe especially to my son Andrew, who's in the Navy and serving on active duty at Top Gun School, I might add, so I'm kind of proud of that. And that's all I have, so, city manager?
I have a number of things, Mayor. First of all, I want to inform the council and the public that the Huff Street Railroad crossing will be repaired from November 3rd through November 7th, and it will be closed during that period of time. The Main Street Railroad crossing is currently closed and should be completed as early as tomorrow. But while Huff Street is closed, Main Street will at least have one lane open, so there still will be some movement of traffic through there. Franklin Street will be paved this week, and we're hoping to open it as soon as next week. So that'll be a good thing to see happen. The Corps of Engineers has completed its dredging for this year, and that material, a lot of that material has been placed in the Technology Park, the Port Authority's industrial park. Winona County continues to haul part of that material to its highway location, highway department location, to use for sanding over the winter. So they're still taking some of that material. The state will finish the Main Street paving project as soon as the railroad crossing is complete, and so that could be done as early as next week. So we're finally wrapping up a number of the large projects that have occurred this year, and that's good to see since winter's coming soon, so get those wrapped up. That's all.
Thank you. Roll call?
Mayor Peterson.
Here.
Councilman Thurly.
Here.
Craig.
Here.
Alexander.
Ayden.
Here.
Morzakowski.
Here.
Double.
Here.
Under the required public hearings, item 2.1 is the CUP ordinance amendments.
I'll declare the public hearing open and ask Carlos to come forward.
Evening, Mayor and Council. I put together a quick presentation here going through the CUP amendments and the agenda item in front of you tonight. The CUP amendments that are in front of you tonight are meant to address gaps in the current zoning ordinance and city code. The existing code does not have general criteria for conditional use permits. Also, the existing code does not have time limits for putting a conditional use permit to use or a sufficiently detailed process for reviewing CUP applications. On October 13th, the Planning Commission reviewed the proposed amendments that are in front of you tonight and unanimously approved them. Just some background on conditional use permits. CUPs are meant for land uses that require special review because of the potential impacts they may have on neighboring properties or on city infrastructure. The existing zoning ordinance requires CUPs for a number of different uses, including bed and breakfasts, professional offices, and funeral homes in residential areas, veterinary clinics in business zones, and potentially hazardous processes in manufacturing zones. And I just want to be clear, this is not a silica sand ordinance. The proposed amendments would apply to any conditional use permit application that the city receives. One major reason for the proposed CUP amendments is the addition of general criteria to the zoning ordinance. State statute says that CUP ordinance shall include both general criteria and specific standards. While the existing code does have specific standards for individual uses, it does not have general criteria which are applicable to all conditional uses. Cities throughout Minnesota do have general criteria that they apply to conditional use permit applications, and as a result, the proposed criteria are based on examples from other municipalities in the state. The 10 general criteria that are proposed are in the attachment A of your council items on pages 2 and 3. The 10 criteria address subjects such as potential neighborhood impacts, environmental impacts, potential infrastructure impacts, as well as potential impacts to historic resources. Under the proposed amendments, the Planning Commission would review CUP proposals for conformance with the 10 general criteria. If a proposal does not meet one or more of the general criteria, the commission may add conditions so that the proposal meets their criteria. Those additional conditions may be such things as fencing, additional screening, larger buffer zones, and others depending on the characteristics of the proposal. In addition, the commission must make findings to support any decision it makes, and of course, all decisions may be appealed to the council. In addition to establishing general criteria, the proposed amendments also designate the Planning Commission to review CUPs instead of the Board of Adjustment, and that's primarily because currently, the Board of Adjustment primarily reviews variances, and those are special exceptions to the city code, and the Board of Adjustment is really best set up to consider variances through a specific process. On the other hand, the Planning Commission is accustomed to reviewing land use issues such as rezoning or site plan review, and CUPs fall in that same category, that land use issue category. So when you take a look at the two groups, the Planning Commission is really better suited to consider conditional use permit applications. The amendments also state that CUPs must be put to use within a year, so if a CUP requires a building permit to be pulled for a new building, that building permit has to be pulled within one year of CUP approval. The amendments also allow minor changes to CUPs with Planning Commission review, and the amendments finally address other procedural details which are meant to better define and streamline CUP review. Overall, in consideration of the amendments tonight, there are a number of options. The first being to approve the amendments as written. In that case, council would move to introduce attachment A for adoption. You could also modify, deny, or table the amendments for future consideration. Thank you.
Questions for Carlos at this time? Carlos, I guess I have a question for you. I know the Planning Commission approved this unanimously, was there any discussion on the Board of Adjustment about this?
I've talked to individual Board of Adjustment members about the reasoning behind conditional use permits and variances, and I think the board is most comfortable reviewing variance applications. And if a conditional use permit requires a variance as part of the application, so say a conditional use permit comes in and doesn't meet required setbacks, the variance part of that would still go to the Board of Adjustment, for the Board of Adjustment to take a look at it as well. So they would still essentially do what they're best at, which is reviewing the variances, while the Planning Commission would take the lead with the conditional use permits.
Okay, thank you. Pam?
Carlos, are there any CUPs currently in the pipeline? Are there any, is there anything coming through that this would affect?
Nothing in the pipeline right now.
Okay.
Okay, anybody in the audience wish to address this issue? I'll ask again, anybody in the audience wish to address this issue? Last time, anybody here wish to address this issue? Say your name and address.
Joe Morris, 23375 Buckle Ridge Road.
Is that microphone on?
Didn't come here for this public hearing, but I've been reading about it, and I really think this is a really good idea, and I really appreciate the thoughtfulness that we did to this.
Thank you. There you go. So I appreciate the thoughtfulness. One of the things that I think is really good is the idea of having the CUPs approved by the Planning Commission rather than the Board of Adjustment. My experience with the Board of Adjustment is that they're not nearly as knowledgeable as Carlos mentioned with land use matters. So I'm happy this is really happening because we need these general criteria. The one concern I have is the minor changes that would just be approved by the Planning Commission. The definition of minor is kind of open to question, I mean, what is minor for some people, maybe major for others? So I would encourage there to be some clarification as to what minor means versus that the Planning Commission can approve. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to speak to this issue? Hearing done, I'll declare the public hearing closed and ask for council discussion. Pam?
Yes, I would move to approve the amendments and introduce attachment A for adoption.
Second. Motion by Pam and seconded by Paul. Further discussion? Al?
Yeah, I have a question of Carlos. If he could answer, first of all, the rule that, you know, you're proposing says it has to be in general used or developed by one year, does that also apply to other conditional use permits? Does this ordinance then, by doing this, apply to those uses as well?
If there's an existing CUP out there that hasn't been put to use, there would be that one-year time limit that would apply to existing CUPs as well, and that one year would go from the time that the ordinance is adopted. According to the ordinance, you can grant an extension to that one-year provision. The city council can grant an extension to that one-year provision.
Could you give us an example of a general CUP that might come before the Planning Commission?
Sure. I actually went through an example request for the Planning Commission. We ran through the general criteria. I won't go through all of the criteria here, but one general request that might come in is for a duplex in a R1 zoning district. An R1 zoning district is a single-family zoning district, and you can only have a duplex in an R1 zoning district if you get a conditional use permit. So we went through this hypothetical application for a duplex at 600 Sioux Street, and that's the property right here. Property's actually bisected by two zoning districts to the north. In this area, it's R1, to the south, it's R3. So duplexes are allowed here, and that's a little bit blurry, I'm sorry, but it's essentially allowed because it's adjacent to a less restricted district. And that less restricted district is this R3 use, or this R3 zone right here. So we ran through each of the general criteria for this type of use and just kind of went through what the Planning Commission would have to do for something like this. But there are a number of uses in the code that are designated as conditional, and these general criteria would apply to them as well, including a duplex in an R1 zoning district.
And to the point that Mr. Morse brought up, aren't all decisions by the Planning Commission revivable upon request by the city council? He's talking about minor, you know, provisions and stuff like that.
Yeah, definitely. In terms of changes to a specific request, if there's a petition for a appeal, it can be appealed to the council.
Thank you.
Other questions? If there aren't any, we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Item 5.1 under new business is a consultant for the preservation education plan.
I would so move that we enter into the contract for a signature by Mr. Greg Gout, the mayor and the city clerk.
I'll second it. Motion by George, seconded by Al. This is something we've discussed in a prior meeting when we approved the grant application, and I don't know if there's anything additional that Mr. Mulder wants to add or not. Are there any questions? Are there questions? Al?
Just a comment, I think Mr. Gout has been very helpful to the city and the other projects that he's done, and I look forward to seeing the results from this particular program.
I would agree, I've worked with Greg on a number of projects, and he's top quality.
Right.
George?
And like I say, you know, Mr. Gout, I don't think he's here tonight.
No, I don't think so.
Very much qualified for this, he's a local man right here, and we can contact him anytime that we may have a question on whatever he's working on and have a direct answer right there, so I think it's a good contract with him.
Well, we'll proceed to vote, if there aren't anything, any other questions? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Carries.
Item 5.2 is air quality monitoring.
All right, well, this is an issue that we've had, we as a council haven't had a lot of discussion about, but certainly there's been a lot of discussion in the community about this. We had a meeting back in October, October 7th, with Minnesota Pollution Control Agency, and following that, there's, the request was that we should take a closer look at this as a council, and that's what we're here to do tonight, so I'll open it up for discussion, I guess. George?
Oh yeah, Carlos or whoever, give us a overview as to what we're all looking at here tonight.
Sure, as the mayor summarized these, this agenda item is in response to the meeting that we had on October 7th at the Senior Friendship Center involving MPCA staff, a number of city commissions, the city council, as well as the public. And at that meeting, PCA representatives presented the results from both Winona, as well as other silica sand facilities in the state, and talked about the results from air quality monitoring in those locations. In each one of the locations, the monitoring showed that the activities were meeting requirements that the federal government has for ambient air quality, as well as health-based values that have been put out by the Department of Health. At the meeting, the PCA representatives also gave an update on state rulemaking, and that's a process by which the state agencies create new rules. And a draft or concept narrative of those new rules is included in the council's agenda package for tonight, and that's kind of a new piece of information there. Those are the rules that they're working on right now. And that draft narrative in attachment D, conceptually, would require fence line monitoring at silica sand facilities in the state, both new and existing facilities. The MPCA is presently soliciting public input on those draft regulations, and the rulemaking process, however, is supposed to take a little bit longer here. It's not supposed to be complete until the end of 2015. So taking a look at that, and also the results from silica sand facilities, both in Winona and in other areas of the state, as well as potential issues with enforcement of a local silica sand monitoring standard, we're suggesting that a prudent action for council would be to make official recommendations to the state rulemaking process at this time. And the PCA recently extended its deadline for comments until November 21st, so if council wishes to make official comments, staff will assemble a resolution for review at the next council meeting on November 17th. That way, still have enough time to get them to the PCA. So the example motion that we put out there tonight is that should council concur with directing staff to create a resolution supporting state requirements for air quality monitoring at the fence line of silica sand operations, a motion to do so would be in order.
Okay, thank you, Carlos. Anybody else, I guess, otherwise I was gonna go ahead and make a motion. Jerry, go ahead.
I moved that we direct staff to create a resolution supporting state requirements for air quality monitoring at the fence line of silica sand operations.
I'll second that.
Motion by Jerry and seconded by George. Further discussion?
I've got a couple comments.
Paul?
There appears to be desire by several people who want air quality testing done at the fence line operations, processing or transfer of crystalline silica dioxide, paid for by the operator in the belief that in doing so, it will control, regulate, or stop these operations. According to the CDC, Central for Disease Control and Prevention, the mortality surveillance showed an average of 162 individuals die annually from or with silica in the U.S. over the period 2000 to 2005. The occupation of sandblasting is noted as especially hazardous. So let me expand on this idea and its logic. In 2012, there were 33,561 highway deaths, in which, according to the Governor's Highway Safety Association, speeding was a factor in one-third, or 11,187 of those deaths every year. Since significantly more people are killed or injured each year by automobiles, we should mandate that the owners of every automobile shall install at their expense a digital readout next to their license plate, front and back, so that all other drivers and pedestrians could see if the vehicles were exceeding the permitted speed. In addition, this would eliminate the making of any upgrades to Broadway or other streets or crosswalks since the visual knowledge of speeding would cause other drivers and pedestrians to be watching for the speeds they observe, those they observe violating the speed limit, and could in then turn them into city hall. In addition, we could reduce our police force since those who either observe or not who exceeded the posted limit would then voluntarily report themselves and pay the appropriate fines. Why, when more people are killed and injured by cars and fugitive dust, is it not fair to propose that all car owners be mandated to purchase and install equipment to monitor current illegal behavior regardless of its cost or effectiveness? How well do we think this would work? Since it is my understanding that there is no state statute for Winona, to adopt any enforceable laws or penalties for violation does not exist and are not enforceable, which then simply makes a voluntary request for businesses to install monitoring equipment. Thus, any level is a permitted level, and any results are subject to the reliability of the equipment, its maintenance and calibration. Who would believe the results unless the maintenance and calibration is provided by a trained employee of the regulator, the city of Winona? It is a tragic example of governmental mandates on business base on the assumption that they are making money and can afford whatever government body throws at them because it might be politically popular. Yet ordering the mandate could have a greater impact, yet ordering a mandate which could have a greater impact on human life would be an unpalable political. That's my comment.
All right, thank you, Paul. Other comments?
I'd ask him to repeat it because I haven't the foggiest idea what you meant, but I'll just read it.
I'll read, I'll pass.
Yeah, thank you.
Al?
I support the motion. You know, we've dealt with this for a long time. I'm glad to hear that the Pollution Control Agency is taking the right steps to develop a process, and one process that once developed and passed into law will be something that we can judge. And to Mr. Double's point about measuring the proposal in the plain language draft of the MPCA says that although there are different kinds of devices that could be used for this type of work, i.e. monitoring the dust and all of that, the rule will require the use of types of monitors that have been judged by the federal government to give reliable information. They carry the designation Federal Reference Method or Federal Equivalent Method. So, you know, I'm pretty sure the state probably knows how they can do this and how they can make it work. The idea that there were fewer deaths from sandblasting doesn't take into account the incredible growth of the sand industry in the last few years and the transportation and the screening of the sand. So I think there's a real need for fence line monitoring, and as I said before, I support this motion.
Okay, thank you. Pam?
Yes, I am relieved to hear you say, to notice that this, that these rules will pertain to new and existing businesses. That was my concern, was that we not have a lot of businesses grandfathered in to previous regulations. So that's a relief. I think that Winona's in a position, compared to other towns and cities in the state, I think Winona's in a kind of a position of needing more diligence on the part of monitors. Because we have so many frac sand facilities and loading facilities in town, I would like to suggest that somehow in our comments about the rules, that we point out that in some of these cases, in some of these places, we have residents living within very close proximity to the facilities. And that's more of a concern for us than for almost any other town in Minnesota. I also would like to point out that because it's on the fence line doesn't necessarily mean that it's upwind or downwind. So I'm not sure what they meant, but I'm concerned that we have downwind monitors, not just on any fence. I presume that that would be the MPCA's job or the consultant's job to come in and figure that out.
Okay, thank you. Well, I too will support this motion. I think it's, I think the most important thing the council can and should do is protect the health and safety of our citizens, and I think there's enough questions out there about the effects from the dust, and we've recently added some monitoring at the YMCA building to provide some baseline information, and I think we need more information than we have now. I think the state, and I'm all in favor of... and I'm all in favor of local control, but I think that the state has a role in this area of letting us know whether our air is of the right quality or not. And I'm glad that the state's taking a closer look at this. And I think, as a council, we should support this. Kerry?
I agree with exactly what the comments that you said. What I was hoping for was this. I mean, I wanted to have us vote, at least conceptually, as a voting body here, if we're gonna support fence line testing. The fact that the state is already looking into this, the timeframe, at least for taking that vote, is perfect. It may take a while before the testing actually comes into play. That is a bit of a concern. But this is a step in the right direction. In the event that the state delays this even further or does not go along with this, then we will have to bring it back and take another vote where we may take a local lead on this. But for the time being, I believe this is definitely the step in the right direction. And I appreciate staff bringing it forward.
I'm a little confused just about some of the, you know, the information in here that I've seen about the cost of fence line monitoring. And I guess that's something that, you know, I hear different amounts. And it looks hugely expensive. And I guess at some point, when we do take another look at this, I'd like to have some clearer information about what the costs are. George?
I as well too will be in support of this tonight. And if I was in the operation of this business of silica sand, frac sand, whatever, you know, whatever you wanna call it, I myself, I would go on my own and get one and get ahead of everybody else. They'll come up with the results, either it is or it isn't. And there's only one way that we're gonna find out. And I also wanna simply say again that the city of Winona, we were one of the first ones, first community, you know, we come under fire for it sometimes, but we were the first community to come up with any regulation regarding the frac sand industry around our area, for transportation, for mining, for all those. We were one of the first ones. Thank you.
Other discussion? Hearing none. We'll vote on the motion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
One opposed.
Item 5.3 is a small cities development program preliminary proposal.
I would move to approve the attached resolution.
Second.
Motion by Al, seconded by George. Discussion? George?
Could Lucy explain what we have here? I like where it's going.
Yes, Mayor and members of council, this is a preliminary proposal for small cities development block grant funding. And the city has a history of using this source of funds for rehabilitation throughout neighborhoods in Winona. The city surveyed the entire city to measure the demand and concentration. And the eastern edge of the city came up as the most area in need. And we had a very positive response from this area. In addition, I want to mention that Minnesota Housing has just complemented this funding proposal with a $490,000 East End Neighborhood Grant. So, we are being advised by Minnesota Housing as well with the current grant proposal that they approved. We just finished rehabilitating about 50 homes in the core area of the city. We had two grants over the last four to five years. And 50 homes for low and moderate income people were able to be rehabilitated. So, this is a preliminary step for funding for both owner occupied and rental rehabilitation funding, and the amount is $600,000. And if it's reviewed positively, we will be asked to come in with a full application in February.
Kerry?
This is an excellent program. My previous job, I worked with that, doing the same grants and et cetera. And it's incredibly complicated. It's very, very difficult. And the city of Winona is well-known for how well they do it. And this is tremendously competitive. It's very few dollars. A lot of cities are trying to get it. And the fact that our staff does such an exceptional job is amazing. And how well you can keep getting that money because it's hard. Other cities can try every year and not get it. And the beneficiaries of this, of course, are the people of Winona that really, really need it. This particular target area, I'm familiar with it, I know you are too. That's an area that could definitely use some assistance.
Lucy, are there any programs like this for, that would help people make their homes more energy efficient?
Yes, this program is, can be used for energy efficiency improvements to the home. In addition to that, our staff works closely with SEMCAC on their weatherization program. So, we try to leverage all the different funding sources to help make homes energy efficient as part of the process.
Good, thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Hearing none. We'll vote. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Kerry's.
Item 5.4 is to set a public hearing on an appeal of an inspections order at 513 East Front Street.
Move to approve the hearing date?
Second.
Motion by George, seconded by Paul. Any discussion? Hearing none. We'll vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Kerry's.
Item 5.5 is to set a recess meeting to certify the results of the city general election. This meeting would be held Monday, November 10th at 5:15 PM at the Winona County History Center.
I would so move to set recessed meeting.
Second that.
Motion by George, seconded by Pam. Discussion? Hearing none. Vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Passes.
Item 5.6 is to approve the maintenance agreement with Winona County for the GIS system.
I will move to approve the agreement.
I would second that.
Motion by George, seconded by Pam. Discussion?
Is this similar to the one the city has had with the county in the past?
Yes, Mayor and council, this is a critical component of what we do every day, keeping all of the information concerning our maps, our infrastructure, our utilities. We have now changed so that we operate through Winona County instead of having our own system. That way, we get the information is updated quickly as it occurs, property sales. We get that information now automatically as part of our whole GIS system. So, this is something that we need to have happen in order to keep working.
And for the public's interest too, that's, the information on the GIS system is accessible through the city's website. So, if, it takes a while to learn it, but once you do, it's very handy and very efficient looking up property addresses and just all the other things that our
Just general information.
Graphic information system can do. Yep.
Okay. Any other discussion? Hearing none. We'll vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Kerry's.
Item 7.1 is council concerns.
Well, I think we'll start with George tonight.
Okay, thank you. I would like to commend our city engineer, Brian DeFrain. With the reconstruction of Franklin Street, there was a problem a resident brought up with a driveway and a sidewalk and things and an alley approach and so on. And I contacted Brian. Brian then contacted this person, as him and I discussed. I phoned Brian at 8:30 in the morning. And by 2 o'clock in the afternoon, the problem was taken care of. And the neighbors were very, very appreciative of that and also to the other neighbors in the neighborhood as well too. So, a very good response. And it was well taken care of. And I just have just a few acknowledgements. I'd first of all like to congratulate Larry Fleuhoff on his retirement of 41 years. I told him 40. He says it's 41 from Badger Foundry Company and wish him a very happy and prosperous retirement. Also, I would like to congratulate Jim and Joan Vindraschek on 50 years of their golden wedding anniversary. And a happy 60th birthday to a young Mary Uphoff. And on a sad note, just to the Tim Schneider family, the Jerry Coolis family, on wife and daughter who's had some medical problems this weekend, I'd just simply like to assure them that they are in the thoughts of many people around our community as she goes through her hopefully healing process. Thank you.
George. Pam?
I have a question. Since we now have, we're going to have Huff Street rail crossing will be closed starting tomorrow. We also have, obviously Franklin is closed. And as you pointed out, Main Street, one lane each way is closed. Who decides when, what the schedule is? We're all happy to have these crossings repaired. But who decides what the schedule is? Why do we have two major, three major crossings closed at the same time?
Mayor and council, I believe it's generally the railroad that makes the decision. I think what happens is they're in town, they're making the repairs. It only makes sense to be doing them all at the same time. In addition, in this instance, the projects had to be coordinated with other street projects, such as the resurfacing of Main and Sarnia, and then the Big Franklin Street project. And trying to figure out what contractor can be there when and how all that gets coordinated is juggling. And we have to just take it when it happens, when it can happen.
Okay, well
Yeah, I wish we could say
We'll take it.
It would be better to stretch it out and have it one done and then the next one started. Unfortunately, it doesn't work that smoothly.
Okay, thank you.
Paul?
Two items. On November 22nd, at the Winona Middle School, there is going to be a play called Bottom, which is on sex trafficking, put on by a company out of the cities, out of St. Paul. And there will be several, county attorney will be there and several others who can, will be participants in a panel discussion on that evening as well. And secondly, the city of Winona has never been in a better position to grow as it is right now. The Bureau of Labor Statistics reports our area is having an unemployment rate between 3.1 and 3.6 using La Crosse and Rochester databases. Similar cities in Illinois are over 8.2 with declining enrollments in our K-12 schools. And each student is supported by over $8,100 in state funding. Or in other words, every 20 kids that move into the Winona area, we can hire also an additional teacher and save a classroom. We want new families and new workers added to our workforce. Each day, we want, the want ads are loaded with opportunities and jobs to be filled. Third and weekend shifts are particularly begging for people to apply for jobs in production workers, retail, and healthcare. I would hope that if anyone has a friend who lives within one day drive time, living in Michigan, Indiana, Illinois, or Wisconsin, to invite them to seek employment and relocate to Winona. The employment opportunities are here, and the Winona employers would love them to relocate their families.
Good, thank you. Jerry?
Thank you. Yesterday, I had the opportunity to talk to a couple of the neighbors up on the West Gilmore area, remember about the Thousand Block where we recently voted to repair that very damaged drainage issue in the alley. And if you recall, one of the deals was to run a drainpipe in between some houses from the alley out to Gilmore. Looks great. They're very happy. It's not done yet, but we were all a little bit concerned in how that would look. It'll be invisible as soon as spring comes. So, it's done very well. And then the other item, the last item, is just to remind everybody that on Tuesday, November 11th, there will be the, once again, be guessing 25 years, I should know. I think it's 27 years now. It'll be the 24-hour Veterans Vigil down at Veterans Memorial Park. So, please don't forget about that. That is the entire 24 hours. Starts at midnight, basically on between the 10th and the 11th, and it goes for 24 hours. And everyone is welcome. Thank you.
Al?
Another welcome to the scouts, the troop six. It's a troop I was in many years ago, many years ago.
How many, Al?
John Hughes was a scoutmaster. So, that's a long time ago. And I concur with Council Person Doubles' comments on the labor shortage that we have. I've known a number of manufacturers who are really, really looking for especially third shift employees. And I appreciate your suggestion. And I would also encourage people, tomorrow's election day, I won't repeat what they say in Chicago, but vote early and often is what that's, I'm not gonna repeat that. And I thank those in our city staff who were instrumental in helping welcome our visitors from our sister city, Masato, here at City Hall. Thank especially Myrna for doing an outstanding job in doing that. Mayor Peterson for being here to welcome them as well. And also, I've been hearing feedback from the diagonal parking on Main Street throughout the week. And I just heard one yesterday, actually. Someone said that because of that diagonal parking and the dangers involved in driving near places where people are backing out, she will no longer drive on Main Street. She'll take other routes to get to whatever businesses she's going to on Main Street. Just a comment that I thought I'd share with you. And then finally, as Council McCrae mentioned, November 11th is Veterans Day. And it's also my wife's birthday. So, I'd like to wish Bonnie a happy birthday on the 11th. And that's
Thank you.
Under the consent agenda, there are five items. We approve the minutes from the October 20th meeting, the final adoption of an ordinance to amend the alternate side parking ordinance, the final adoption of an ordinance to amend the housing code, an ordinance to amend the building code, and an ordinance to amend the fees for plan reviews.
Move the consent agenda?
Second.
Motion by Al, seconded by Pam. Any discussion? Hearing none. We'll vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Kerry's.
Mayor, I move to recess the meeting to 5:15 on November 10th instead of adjourned.
Second. Second. All those in favor, say aye. Opposed. All right, we're in recess.
Yay, recess!